And now we'll have approval of the agenda.
Motion. Now seconded.
Motion by Jeanelle, seconded by Claire Vane. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of the consent agenda.
Are there any questions at the corner?
Cold enough for you Larry?
Yeah, it is.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Motion by Jeanelle, seconded by Cindy. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, action item. Acknowledge the cancellation of operations/maintenance contract with Rockwell. Now the electric is broken.
There's really just no, there's no real action for you to take. It's more a matter that it goes in the minutes that you acknowledge receiving the fact that they've canceled that contract. And basically what that does is it doesn't hold them to the really low prices that were in the original contract. It doesn't mean they aren't going to come take care of our problems. As long as we're buying their power, they're going to take care of what we need. It just won't be at those almost half price rates.
And the reason we're releasing them from that contract is it has expired?
Yes, yes.
And they don't choose to renew it?
Right. And see, we terminated our power purchase agreement with them, so this was going to have to happen at some point. They just chose to terminate it with us because they were charging less than...
The gold rate.
Yeah. So that's...
But is that effective immediately?
Uh, I think so, yes.
What is the gold rate? I'm just curious. Do you know?
Um...
Without...
Yeah, they, it's, it's, I sent it out in your email just a minute, I'll find it.
I guess not.
Regular time is $70 an hour. Overtime, Monday through Saturdays, 90. Sunday and holidays is 110.
So they move right through.
Yeah. And basically, they've been charging us those rates anyway, so...
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's a formality that we did need to, and this is effective December 20th.
I'd make a motion, Verdi, to acknowledge the cancellation of the operations/maintenance contract with Rockwell Valley Electric Co-op. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, motion by Jane, seconded by Jeanelle. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consider yard waste site rule, resolution 13...
No, you're skipping ahead honey.
The water meters, water meters.
Oh, I put the check mark down.
When they come down on you, Harvey.
Well, I put the check mark down, it's too much for me.
Did you only get the one bid for the water meters?
I have two bids for the water meters. And after our last meeting, I announced what the guy said, and we had another bidder in the room who said, "Well, I'll give you more than that," but he wouldn't say how much. So I ended up sending photos of the meters to the previous bidder and made them both put it in a, in an envelope. So I don't know what's in either one, and we'll open them and find out.
And just for the record, one of the bidders is Jared, right?
Uh, well, I think so. I haven't opened it. It doesn't say on the outside, how's that?
Well, I...
Okay, this one is from Jim Reiners, our original Inquirer. They're 78 Rockwell 5/8 inch meters, and he'll give $5.43 each. They're 65 T-10 5/8 inch meters, and he'll give $4.26 each.
Once again Nancy, you said 60?
78 at $5.43 and 65 at $4.26. Wow, that's $744. And the note also says, "We'll pay more for larger meters such as 1-inch, 1/2-inch, or 2-inch." And I didn't send him any photos or ask for that, but if we have those that he can take off, we'll just, I assume, accept his price and do it. Okay? And this one is Jerry's, and he bid $3.50 per meter, straight across.
I'd make a motion that we accept the higher bid.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
How you doing Jerry?
Okay, motion by Jerry, seconded by Randy. All votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I got a check mark there already. Okay, consider yard waste site rule, resolution 13, gathered this year.
Is that any...
Yeah, you should have that. If not, look for the other one on the back, Jane. The two resolutions are, should be back to back.
And Nancy, this was put together as...
There are chairs around the corner if you want to go.
By lines to follow.
Excuse me, I'm doing too many things at once. What did you say?
These, this was put together as, uh, for model communities.
Yeah, I borrowed some of it and added some of it and changed some of it. Basically... Guys, there's chairs out there if you want to bring them in, right around the corner. Basically, um, we need something, we had an incident with a gentleman from outside of town hauling his stuff into our yard waste site, and there's nothing in our ordinance that really prohibits that because it's an open site. So this, this is the first step to putting some teeth into what we do so that we have an opportunity to regulate that just a little bit. And basically, it says the yard waste site is for residents only and only yard waste from properties within the city limits. This is previously, as approved by council, to check keys out from City Hall during regular business hours. I happened to be in Lakeview the other day and got to look at some of their rules over there, and they only allow their people, I think it was two hours, they could check a key out and bring it back two hours later. So I didn't know if that was something you wanted to include. That's a blank there, it's up to you guys. And then again, whether or not you wanted to allow the keys to be returned in the payment drop box when no one's here, or if you wanted to, because I'm not here full-time, it makes it a little difficult. But I thought that was something you guys wanted to talk about and decide. This, this makes anyone in possession of a key to the site responsible for the, anything that would get dumped there while they're in possession of that key. If they go open the gate and leave it open and don't close it and are gone several hours and something gets dumped, they're responsible for the cost of cleanup. Again, only yard waste, clippings, weeds, flowers, mulch, garden waste, leaves, small branch, brush and branches. And I put in here no larger than 12 inches, and that's something I want you guys to determine. And the reason I put that in there is I think that there are avenues to get rid of the bigger stuff, people that will take those, haul them away, split them, cut them, whatever. And I think sometimes we get into trouble with our homeowner next door who doesn't like the smoldering because we have the big stuff smoldering. That anything smaller will burn up faster and be gone faster and, but that's another...
I'm going to interrupt. My suggestion on that was that we have a separate spot where the bigger logs get dumped and maybe have some kind of contract with someone, someone that would use them to come and get them once they're dumped there. Because if people are cutting down trees, we have to have someplace for the big logs to go. And if they're not put in with all the brush, maybe we can designate, you know, a separate...
Separate part of the site.
...people to that, that burn wood, that they might come and get it.
But what you run into like right now is when it sits, and Jerry told me, there's a pile down there now that was supposedly set aside for somebody and they haven't picked it up.
Oh.
A big pile, from what I've received, but that happens, so...
Well, but maybe if we had some more of a formal agreement, that would work. I don't know. I will tell you though, that there are a lot of cities that do not allow that big stuff to go there at all. If a contractor comes to take a tree down, it's up to the homeowner and the contractor to get rid of that big stuff that can't go to the yard waste site. Every contractor that comes to take a tree down says, "Can I take this to your yard waste site, or do I have to do something else with it?" So that is not a service we have to provide. If you want to, great, but we don't have to provide that.
Are we permitting burning back there?
No.
I heard you mention something about the big stuff burning longer.
Jerry burns it. We don't permit anybody but Jerry to burn it.
At certain intervals, he tries to burn down the pile.
Yes, yes.
And that's one of the reasons the pile gets so big, is because we have the big stuff in there.
Yes.
Not the only reason.
Yes, it's one of the reasons. The next item on here is that all yard waste must be removed from its transport containers, including plastic bags and all other containers. That is the way some of those people cover up their illegal dumping, is they put it in a garbage bag with some leaves and then you don't know it's there until the, either the bag degrades or it gets lit on fire. The city reserves the right to refuse use of the yard waste site to any resident caught abusing the site or for breaking any of the rules, and it also allows for you to set a fine in, plus a cost of cleanup removal disposal of any illegal material, should anyone be caught dumping non-yard waste site items. The other thing in, that I would recommend in addition to this resolution and the changes you may make is that next summer, we put proper fencing around at least three sides of that.
I think we need to hire six-foot fencing around it if we're going to, yeah, it really is monitoring it at all. Yeah, if we're going to monitor it at all, we have to get proper fencing and keep it quiet.
When you say three sides, is it impossible to fence on, well...
The west side?
Not impossible, but it'd be really expensive. Cause it's a, it's a pretty straight down drop there.
For the three sides though, does it connect to anything in the back, or it's just, you take it to the edge and then that's it? You take it where someone can't drive?
I can't, I guess I can't tell you if there's a fence at the bottom of that cliff or not.
I just...
There is, there is.
Okay. I haven't been down on that side of it.
See, I thought, I thought there might be, it might be something we could connect to back there, but maybe not.
They have to put the big logs on the shoulder to get...
Well, then that, that would be a deterrent.
So do you want us to fill in the blanks?
Yep. Pass that around for me.
I can write my name on it.
Or you can write it down, that's okay.
I can write my name on it though.
Yeah. I need to go in the minutes, we're all here and I don't know where...
They need to do your thing and...
How many keys do we have?
I mean, like, well, and for me, I can't get here in business hours, so...
Right.
Check out, we're at large, get keys.
We will have when we do that, yes.
We need it for more than two hours.
Right.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, Nancy, that's true, you know.
Yeah, what, what did you say?
He wanted to know how many keys we had. I said we would have an ample number of keys.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so if we go with the 24-hour period and the pile, then we drop it in the utility payment box when they're done? I think that's okay. They better put their name on it, who's returning it, if there's more than one key out, it don't have to be so like...
Put it in an envelope and drop it, yeah.
Yeah, with their name.
In the fall, you know, when you've got probably five, six, seven, 10 people who want to work that afternoon, you don't think that's going to be a problem?
It'll be two to four a day, at the most. I don't, I don't think there's that much.
Nancy, did you talk to Lake City? They went with an optional site on the bigger stuff? You know, if you want to do the smaller stuff up here, fine. If we ended up like a tornado or something come through here, a severe ice storm, if we need to go someplace with it, we could go with an optional site and burn that, you know, away from that.
Yeah, but I don't know where that is.
There's a...
Are you offering?
It's down by Pinto Hollams.
He takes the small stuff down there too.
Okay, that's what they do now. Now, you can take it out to my pit if you want to, the bigger stuff, and I can burn it out there, and it's away from everything.
Yeah.
You know, you don't have the complaints of smoke blowing through a pretty yard and stuff when we have to do it. I have a spot out there you can put it.
Very cool.
You know, on the bigger stuff, if you've got an issue with that, it's not a big deal. In fact, that's where they put the waste in these bins up here, is out in that gravel pit I got, and they leveled it out, we're just good. And I wouldn't have any problem with the bigger stuff.
Well, when we get there, we'll track that down and...
Yeah, I have a place to go with it.
Get a specific location, if that's what we want to do. Yeah, that's awesome.
Do we need to incorporate that site into this resolution?
Um, well, not necessarily.
No.
But unless you don't, but if, I mean, we need to have some option if you're going to put a size restriction on what goes up here. I don't know that necessarily be, needs to be in this resolution, but it's a detail we need to track down.
See, I'm still going, not in favor of the 12-inch, I just...
You're going to bring it down 24 hours?
You think it should be bigger? Well, I just think that there should be an option to put the bigger stuff elsewhere.
And out of Jerry's is not...
Well, Jerry offered that.
Elsewhere? Is that too far away elsewhere?
So you want to leave the 12-inch in there?
I think it should be a little bigger.
I just don't like, who's going to frigging go out there and measure? Seriously?
Well, we're talking big trunks, tree trunks and that sort of thing, right?
If you say 12-inch, nobody's going to go measure to see if it's 13 or 11, but you can tell the difference between 12 and 18 by looking at it.
Put it 12 inches, plus or minus two.
Don't make me minus.
What would that be then, Verdi? Do the math for us, will you?
We could do the, we could do the 12-inch just to put some type of explanation about what size we're talking about down there, and then couldn't we include in here an alternative site will be designated for the larger stuff?
Yep, yep, we can do that.
And we got it, thanks to Jerry, we got it handled.
The only thing we'd have on that is maybe Jerry'd have to run off, push them up in a pile if they got, a lot of people just flop them off there.
Right.
Logs run out there and just push them up into piles and you can burn them later.
More so.
And it'd only come from the city of Auburn, so it's...
North of Dale Jensen's.
Yeah. The other thing, Jerry, we probably need to get some kind of an address location because we'll have to have liability insurance on that.
That's, that's...
But that's details for you and I to work out.
I got liability insurance too, I mean, I dump them off, we just have to push them up?
Yeah, well, I think we can do that.
And that addresses the partridgeous issue?
Well, at least part, it should help.
Well, help.
It won't be all of it, I don't think. So did you guys decide on a timeline for the keys to be out?
24 hours.
24 hours, then available, put back in the...
Okay, alright.
They'll have to somehow label when they drop them off, who the key's from.
Well, we put a tag on each key as it goes down.
Oh, okay. Well, we're going to put the tags on it.
I'll have a numbered, numbered one, two, whatever.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
And then you just put the name.
Yeah.
Okay, good idea. Okay, and then the fine?
So what did we decide on size?
12 inches and then...
Okay.
And then put some language in there, an alternative site will be available.
Alright.
What, what do the cities have for a fine?
I haven't seen their...
No, I thought maybe you researched.
I saw it at Lakeview the other day and now I can't remember, but...
No, there used to be like 50 or 75 bucks.
I think you guys can set a minimum fine of up to 750 if you want to.
I'm thinking 200, you gotta make it a little steeper, so you don't want to...
You gotta make it more expensive than taking it to the landfill. Is what you got to do. Or taking it, getting fined out where they dump it in the country.
What's a fine out in the country?
I knew you were going to ask that. I think, I don't know, but we could find out. But, I don't know, $250, I'd keep some people at bay. Are you...
Sure, I think that's fine, I think at least 200.
250, just because...
Take it out, bro.
Would you sing, Claire?
I'm just making a comment, we don't want that.
They'll throw them in the hitches.
250, yeah. Okay, you're dumping in Larry's yard.
Yeah, now haul it to the ditch.
Are we just considering that?
Nope, you can pass it if you want to, it'll be resolution 1325.
1325?
Yep.
Make a motion that we pass resolution 1325 with our additions.
Second.
Motion by Justin, seconded by Randy. Okay, we discussed it, is there any further discussion before we hold on? Okay, resolutions, are they roll call votes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jeanelle?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Justin?
Aye.
Randy?
Uh...
Cindy?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
All ayes. Motion carried. Number seven, nuisance abatement, open for discussion.
Does Tanner want to talk, is he yet?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want to speak?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'll talk. You know, start off with, if you want to go with nuisance abatement, you can have, there's several of them in town you could do, but that's all the council will be doing, is doing nuisance abatement. And I feel number, number two is that you don't want to run a business out of town. It's been established here for years and years and years. Tanner's a young man trying to, to do, continue this business, and you certainly don't want to upset him to the point where he, where he would leave town. I had a chat with Tanner this afternoon, and I personally, when I was mayor, I personally never complained about parking on the public park where there's got some trailers and stuff, but if that bothers the council, then so be it. You know, if you want that removed, that's up to the council, but, you know, we'd have a complaint once in a while, but that was back in the days when a lot of farmers didn't have their well-equipped shops like they do nowadays, and sometimes there'd be two or three combines parked on the street and things of that nature. And Martin did his best to turn that equipment around as fast as he could, and there were times that he took it up and parked it up on the city's lot between the gun shop and Dave Toddoff's home. You know, and I don't know, we're a small town, you need to accommodate your businesses, and I personally don't see anything wrong with the trailers and stuff sitting there, but like I said, that's up to the council. You know, there's times when Tanner doesn't have any control, you know, a farmer brings it in after he's closed, he's going to park it there by the Ansgaffay or someplace, and Tanner won't even know it's sitting there until the next day when he comes to work, or if it's on a weekend, he won't know about it until the Monday when he comes in. So I'd hate to see the council get too harsh on that subject, but, you know, it's a... Another thing I want to say is, you know, if somebody has a complaint, when I was mayor, I told that person complaining to come to me or a council person, "If you have a complaint, bring it to the council. If you don't have enough guts to come to the council meeting, then we're not going to talk about it." And, I don't know, a couple of other things I want to say is, has Merrill Ludwig complained with that stuff sitting there?
Verbally, to me, his wife has, yes.
His wife, okay, I didn't know that, I didn't know that. And then, you know, talking about nuisances, you know, what about all this crap that's down here at the old standard station at Frank? And he parks it on city property too occasionally.
What about Dick Hines?
Huh?
What about Dick Hines?
Pardon me?
Dick Hines plays.
Well, that's what I said, you know, if you want to do, if you want to do nuisance abatement, the council had to be having a meeting probably two times a week or something, but, you know, I'll just say that, you know, we're, we're a small town, and I don't know why it's so damn difficult to get along anymore, but...
And especially when it's a thriving business.
Pardon me?
And especially when it's a thriving business.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, small towns are having a heck of a tough time maintaining some businesses, as everybody knows, and, you know, so what if somebody parks on the street or public parking once in a while? Hell, I, I see farmers come to town sometimes, they'll just park in the middle of the damn road and go in and do something, and, you know, are we going to complain about that every time something like that happens?
Beer truck behind Dolly's.
Huh?
Beer truck behind Dolly's, he parks right in the middle of that, I mean, it happens all the time.
It's just a continuing thing, and I don't know how severe you want to get with your, with some of this stuff, and to me, what happens down there at Martin's, I was mayor for 17 years, and, and I never did have, I never did go talk to Martin, and Martin would, would try his best to get things done, but there was times when he was so darn busy that things would pile up on him, you know? You know, a farmer brings a combine to town, where in the hell's he going to park it? He's going to park it down Martin's, Martin's area. So, I'm sure, but the guests that are here tonight, it looks to me like farmers have, would like to have voiced some concerns too in support of Tanner, and right now, that's all I'll say. Thank you.
I think what came to a head was that part of the equipment was parked on the traveled portion of the street for several days. I think this brought it to a head then.
What equipment was that?
Pardon?
What equipment was that?
That auger.
Huh?
Paulan auger.
Well, it wasn't parked in the street, it was parked in...
No, it was, sorry.
Huh?
It was.
Well, I talked to Tanner about that also, and he said that, that he had to order a park from it, and went to Haley's, Haley's didn't have a park, and they had to order, so that delayed the fixing of that auger, and that was a big auger, I will agree. And I don't think Tanner felt comfortable pulling that up to the city lot with your overhead electric lines and block off the highway.
By that time, he had moved it to the south side of the street.
Pardon me?
By that time, he had moved it to the south side of the street next to the apartment building, so it was out the street then.
Okay. Well, there's going to be times, I think, when...
And it was parked on the street because he couldn't, he was told he couldn't park on the south side of the street, so...
So he just moved it back and forth.
So he moved it back and forth. So what do you do with that big equipment that you can't get under power lines or maneuver around town?
Can you even get under the power lines of yours?
No, not really, no. And why would we...
Why would you want to transport it back and forth for a couple of days when it wasn't hurting anything where it was sitting?
Exactly.
They weren't moving the snow around it.
And we got a shop that we can fix the most of our stuff on, but some stuff we don't have the machines for, that Tanner does, and if we can't bring it to Auburn, then why would we want to bring it anywhere else?
It's not worth transporting it back and forth where it's sitting in one spot for two days.
Only six miles away from it.
A week or whatever it was, it's still not worth transporting it back and forth.
I think it's just certain situations that develop that it's kind of out of the hands of both the farmer and Tanner, and, you know, like a, combines and everything are so huge nowadays compared to what they used to be, or the fuel conditioners or whatever, they're all big, you know, and, and...
It's just a little common sense, I mean...
Yeah, it's just common sense, we're a small community, and I think people need to relax a little bit. I don't know why we have all this darn kind of controversy anymore, but...
And if it's in the way, in the middle of the road, how big of a deal is it for them to go around the block?
Well...
Well, it's not that, it's the liability issue of something parked in the traveled part of the roadway.
Buzzy, your ass or Tanner's ass?
Yeah, it'd be mine.
It'd be Tanner's ass, wouldn't it be you?
No, we'll all get sued. And the, the part about liability, it doesn't matter who's liable, it matters who can afford the lawyer to defend yourself.
That's anybody, it's everybody, she's everybody.
Yeah, but you're right, but it is a liability issue for the city if it's parked Yeah, but you're right. But it is a liability issue for the city if it's parked in the traveled part of the roadway and we look the other way.
The thing is, Kylie, if it's parked in the street, you know, and then at night when it's dark...
So, but my truck is parked in the middle of the street at night.
Well, I know, but you have some, some of our older people that don't see very good at night, you know.
Look up those flashers on them.
There's all kinds of situations.
I think that would really help.
And it does. I mean...
If you can get it out of the street.
But that hasn't been done to this point.
Yes, it has.
Yes, it has.
I remember a certain time, because Eric and Zach's tractor broke down.
That's what happened.
And the tool bar was completely blocking the road, and there was a flasher on it all night.
Oh, I was talking about the auger, but anyway, okay.
Well, it's still the same principle.
I don't know. It's just, you know, things sometimes develop that nobody has any control over and with the equipment as large as it is anymore.
And it's seasonal.
Yeah, and it's seasonal, you know, and it's, uh, uh, I don't know, you know, like those honey wagons that were in town. They were here quite a while, you know, and I don't know if they were just looking for parts or just Tanner was behind or what, but...
There's like three or four, maybe.
Might have been, might have needed a little faster turnaround on some of them, you know, but because that bothers people.
It was a turnaround though, Larry, because they all look alike. There were, one would come and, or one would come and go, and then another one would come.
Yeah.
I mean, they all look the same, so...
Well, I'm saying there's just certain situations that I think we all need to take a deep breath and relax.
Well, I totally agree. I mean, like I said, we're a thriving business. We have two employees. I just can't imagine this being such a big deal.
I've said it before, you know, Martin's been in business a long time and I, in the seventeen years I was mayor anyway, he treated the city very good. And I'm sure Tanner has or will in the future and, uh, you got to do a little give and take, I think, and...
I think we're willing to make some exceptions, Larry, you know.
Excuse me.
I think we're willing to make some exceptions.
Yeah.
But you know, as mayor, how important it is to treat everybody the same.
I know.
And, and the minute you make exceptions, uh, random exceptions that become permanent exceptions is when people get upset. And, uh, those kinds of situations you talked about, those exceptional kinds of situation where the combine comes in or the honey wagon comes in, there has to be a different place to park it then because, because as things change.
I agree.
Things change, and the old Auburn enterprise is no, it is now a living residence. And you, to have a honey wagon parked by there for any, any length of time is an issue. Especially when you're trying to sell, sell it, and especially after somebody moves into it.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, you've got Martin's Welding, Setner, there's literally very little space for anything to be parked. That's, that's a fact.
Yeah.
The stuff in the right of way, in front of the stop sign, the running gears, the, uh, running gears with railroad ties, those sorts of things have been sitting there permanently for a very, very, very long time. And in some cases, what happens is because that space is already used up with what I'll call permanent property of, of Martin's Welding, they can't pull that auger off to the, off to the side where it could sit temporarily.
Yeah, probably.
So if we could get Tanner, and that's why, and for all of the reasons that you brought up, that it's a thriving business, that it isn't about disliking Tanner in any way, shape, or form. We all acknowledge his talent and are thrilled about him being in town and doing what he does. That is, that's, that's why we made an exception and offered him a lease for six months to find some sort of solution for a dollar. And, and we meant well by that.
Right.
And we meant to signal to you, we want to work with you. Even Tanner, if you could move that permanent stuff, I call it permanent because it has been there a very long time. I'm very old, and it's been there a long time. And, and if you could move that to your grandpa's lot there in the back, then you would have room to pull that temporary stuff off to the side. And temporarily being on the side of the road, I don't think anyone would have an issue with.
I won't speak for Tanner, but I had, I talked with Tanner a while this afternoon, and I think Tanner has agreed that he would try to do better. And...
You know, if we could...
Doing something with things that come in, it's a bit of an inconvenience for him, but it, it's not that, it's not that much convenience, you know. If it's some big farm equipment that can go up to the lot and stuff and, and I think Tanner more or less agreed he would try to cooperate.
If we can get you to move that property off in front of that stop sign, move that. Now, if you have some, like an auger that shows up that you, you can't take up to the other lot and you need to set it there, that's the perfect place for, temporarily. But it's that stationary stuff that you've got sitting there.
Oh, like the auger will fit there?
Well, it'll fit on the side of the road better than it'd fit in the middle of, or on the other side of the road. So, you know, if it was cleared on that side, then you'd have more room for that temporary stuff that shows up. But it can't be totally cleared. I mean, he has to have a place for his iron wagons and that kind of stuff to sit. That can't all be cleared out of there. But it's not the city's responsibility to find you a place to put it. Can you put the iron wagon at your grandpa's lot? No, that's inconvenient, totally inconvenient.
You're asking him to take away the advertising?
How many times do you go out to the iron trailer daily?
Couple times a day.
We're, we're talking half a block.
We're going to take a whole sheet of iron halfway down a block?
Then do I got to charge the city for us walking?
What are some of those other ones? Uh, what are some of those other things? They have to sit there?
Car trailer.
It's part of his business.
I understand that.
What about those two long trailers that you put the ties on and stuff, Tanner?
One of them need to get done.
One of them's there to be worked on. Yes, the one with the wood can be moved, but I don't, I just can't see the other stuff being moved.
There's one wagon that's been there quite a few months. Now that could be moved.
Well, that's because I need to come and pick it up. And that's the other thing. We wait on customers to pick stuff up. Well, I tell your customer that, "Come and get it," or it'll get, it'll be gone. I mean, he's... Lots of people put their time on it. It isn't about being a ginnu. It's, it's being for you, Tanner. We're trying to work with you. But you can't expect the city of Auburn to provide a parking lot for your permanent property, I'll call it. And you have some, some space right in front of your shop that you could still put a few things.
So which was parked at Bruce's house across the street?
What?
Put a few same driveway, behind the phone office, but they won't get into the community building.
That's what I was going to ask you about today.
Otherwise, you could put a Phil's driveway on the alley side.
Hey, put it all in front of my driveway.
Well, I think to make a, to make a long story short, I think Tanner would more or less agree that he'll try to cooperate a little bit better. Is that right?
Yep.
Tanner, don't feel like we'll pick it on you or not. Andrew had to buy the lot next to his apartment building because he had that thing. The city was forcing him to, to either buy it or get it off of there.
Well, I wish we had that option. Right.
Yeah, I know. I agree. I wish you did too.
Yeah.
But they, they, they forced him to buy it too.
And you've approached Ludwig, and they won't sell that lot? So, are you willing to move that, what I call, permanent stuff on the side of the road? That would be very, very helpful. And will you be needing the lease, or are you saying?
I'm going to move it all right up there and someone else can look at it then.
Do you have a place close by you can put that junk wagon so you don't have to go all the way over? You got to have something there.
Yeah.
You just can't go in the one.
No, that's too far.
You can't move him iron wagons.
No. I, I think that's just part of his business and, and like Larry said, that part we might have to put the other way.
Put the iron... Why, you say you have any lots of cars?
Oh, boy, I don't know. I don't think anything's...
You say you don't have anything that's bigger that we can, we can just buy and... Well, just sell that ground between Potter's.
Yeah.
Sell for sale?
Or it's a leased part.
Yeah, that's, we haven't brought, even thought about, so...
They're willing to sell it. We got enough buyers right here. Tanner wants to free stuff up there, we can do it now.
We got to put it up on the public bid.
Yeah, put it up, it's fine, but...
Yeah, do it. What if you don't, what if you don't get that?
That property up there.
It's sold.
Is it sold? Who bought it?
It's sold.
What does it matter? Just curious.
Ed Reynolds, Ed Reynolds bought that.
Oh, just curious.
Yes.
Well, do we have an agreement, Tanner, that you would, you would still have room for your iron wagon in front of your office of your shop? And you could move the rest of it off of the, the right of way of the city's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that, that lease was for your temporary pending things, so...
So just move them around a little bit? Okay.
Okay, if we have your agreement with that. Otherwise, if you're not going to utilize the lease, don't... The city doesn't want to make the exception of leasing a spot for you that you're not going to utilize.
I'll fill it up tomorrow.
Return the lease, please.
I will.
I'll do that. You have to comply with the terms of the lease, which is... Okay. Thanks.
We're ready.
We're ready. Good.
Do we need any action on that, Tanner?
I don't think so.
We go take care of it?
Do you have any questions, Tanner, or anything else you want to say?
So you're saying the only thing that can sit in front of that shop is that iron trailer?
I'm saying that...
Permanently.
Permanently. Right.
So if you move it around every other week, you get to go and put the iron trailer by the shop.
You can abuse the lease if you want, and then
Just put it on the blacktop right shop.
Six months, it'll, it'll be done. But
It goes along.
The city is not under an obligation to provide you parking
Side of his shop.
For permanent. I'll just say fixtures, Tanner, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. I hope you work with us.
Yeah.
Because we feel like we made a great, generous offer to you.
Mentioned everything.
How much are parking tickets?
We'll have to discuss that if we have to enforce it. Well, and if Jerry's offering you behind the, back here, behind the telephone office.
Yeah.
I mean, Jerry...
I could talk to phone company. I bet we could lease that to Tanner and they could park all right behind the phone office, right back to the alley right next to it.
So that would be close to your highest solution.
If we can lease that, I mean,
I'll just fence it out.
The phone office don't have to provide parking for the community building, so...
No.
Yeah.
And that's what they've always done.
So you'd be clear all the time.
Tanner, have a few beers with Phil and you can probably use his driveway.
Yeah.
We'll discuss that.
Over a few beers.
Who's buying?
Shortly.
Okay, so Jerry, is that for sure you're going to see if you can't getting some room behind the telephone office?
Yeah, they could fill that lot up, clear it back.
Clear it back to the alley. So then you, you shouldn't have any trouble with your iron trailer or whatever it is.
Except if you need to get a generator in there.
What's that?
Except if you need to get a generator in there.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Leave some space for that. That's all.
Why would I have to get agreement signed with the city?
You don't. I, that's not what I said.
She just said, in case we have an ice storm where your telephone company has to get a generator in there.
Yeah, that's not a problem. In fact, Tanner's went over there and helped to hook up.
So you're going to move everything that's in the right of way over to the telephone lot?
Not everything.
Everything but?
Hmm, iron trailer.
And maybe his your other trailer.
Like car trailer?
Yeah. Will you do your best to? I'd appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah. Off the street.
Okay, we're done with, uh, that discussion?
Yes. Anybody else have anything to add? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
How about six? Yeah, it's on the back of the other resolution, guys.
And this is about, give us a brief of what you're making?
This is, well, actu- actually the resolution you asked for, for the terms for Moore's concrete.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
Okay? And basically, it says that total cost of construction of that underground was ninety-one thirty-eight sixty-four. And he, or half of it was that. He needs to pay that amount. Um, this instructs the city clerk to provide invoice to him. Um, gives him thirty days to submit payment, and once it's paid, then we will pay it back to him in sixty equal credits to his power bill of one fifty-two thirty-one. This is exactly what we agreed to last meeting, except for it has real numbers in it now. Um, the other thing, it does go one, um, step farther than what we agreed to last month is that, um, should he forget, or should he refuse to submit his deposit of ninety-one thirty-eight sixty-four, that we intend to place a lien on the property and disconnect service.
Got to have some leverage in there. I would make a motion to pass Resolution thirteen twenty-six. I'll second it.
I was just going, can I say before we vote? The city will retain the ownership of the transformer then, right?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yes. It's just a, it's a, it's really a deposit that covers half of the cost of the construction on that part of it, but it will always be ours.
Right.
In fact, I'd like to rename the resolution to the commemorative Larry Finley Resolution.
I'm sorry. I'll try to keep my...
No, 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 I meant it because this is bad. This was the rule you had in place. I, I have a motion to approve Resolution number thirteen twenty-six.
Again?
Yes. I'm looking for a second.
Yeah, I second it.
No, yeah, Cindy already did.
Oh, Jesus.
Okay, it's brought in by Jane, seconded by Cindy to approve Resolution fifteen that twenty-six. Any further discussion? All vote in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion carried. Knowledge, uh, Carrie and Peterson's proposal.
This one came in when I got, the, the gentleman of the company came and stopped here and went and looked at the job. And when he sent his estimate back to me, it was a little higher than I had originally told council it was going to be. And so that's why I put it basically in front of you tonight to acknowledge that it was going to be higher than what I told you it was going to be.
It's Carrie and Peterson?
Carrie and Peterson. That's the company that did the overhead installation out here. And I do believe that this will not include the cost of the supplies, which we will still get from the REC.
Estimate one week.
Yeah.
Can I ask one more question and then I'll shut up?
I don't know. Don't ask me. Ask the mayor.
I'll shut up and leave.
Yes.
On this, on this subject, uh, a consultant you had, Ollivon or?
Bonderman, Alan Bonderman.
Yeah. Has he been approached on any of this stuff?
Yes, he's reviewed all these.
Because he did, I, in my opinion, he did an excellent.
Yeah, he's reviewed, he was, he actually stopped here one day last week, and so I showed him all this stuff, and he said, he, he thought it looked about right.
He thought the costs were within line and...
Yeah, yeah. He did.
I'll leave.
No, no, just...
I, no, that was a good point that I should have told council, and I just...
Because he was our consultant, and he did write a great review.
Yeah.
Yes, he did, I thought he-
Which we still need to talk to him about at some point.
Of all the many consultants and stuff, he did a heck of a good job, I thought.
I agree, I agree. You need a motion for this?
I think it would be better, cleaner, just to prove them to do the work. This is no way set in stone dollar wise, but it's about what they, about eight thousand dollars more than I thought it was going to be, so...
But when you say it's not set in stone, it'll be close to this?
It'll be pretty close to this, unless, unless it should happen to take a lot more time. They have to change out a bunch of poles that we're not anticipating, and things like that.
Okay, will you report back to us if it does?
Yes, absolutely.
I will make a motion to approve the Carrie and Peterson power line contracting costs proposal.
I need a second.
Yeah, Matt Justin.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Justin. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
I'm hoping they'll come and do that yet in December. I haven't talked to him, but I will touch base with him tomorrow, and they should be about done with their REC work, because I thought they had about another week to get their REC work done. FEMA had a deadline that they had to meet, so they were going to try to do that, and it, actually what Alan told me is that this was cheaper because they're already here, and they didn't have to mobilize clear from northern Minnesota down here, so anyway, there you have it.
Community improvement plan. I want to add to this, the fencing around the dump.
Okay, what are we adding?
Fencing around the dump.
Is that going to be fencing out, um, to, did you, are you thinking about around Partridge property too, or are you going to need that fenced, or?
We'll have to fence that.
Or do we have to fence that part of it, or?
Well, we'll have to fence up to Todd's, and, I don't know, actually just the front side there.
The front, no, and the-
Cause they can't get onto the east side, right. They can't get onto Todd's property anyway. So if we do the front parts-
The east and the south?
There, the east, yeah.
East and south. That's the only way they could get in, is?
Yeah, yeah.
Do we need on the south end?
Yeah.
I would.
Yep.
I'll tell you what, you're talking about some tough fencing to put in, Janelle in the south, goes down the-
Well, if you could go to a certain way, so far.
Yeah, you probably don't need to go clear down the ravine, do we?
No, uh-uh, no, we just-
Okay, cause if you go down that ravine over, that's an house or fence, you got a heck of a-
Well, I just want the east side, and then go around, kind of around the, to the south.
The flat part.
So they can't drive in there.
Where they can't drive in and dump.
Yeah, we've been locking the gate, and I don't know that Jerry ever put the-
Well, you got that other-
Rest of the fence.
You got that other opening on the fence.
Yeah, yeah.
Grabbing the arm one through.
Yeah, that four foot opening.
You measured it, Alan.
No, he's going through it. And we're going to close that then also?
Yes.
Yeah, I would.
Now, did you want it a certain height? You said something about that, I mean, does it need to be a certain height?
I think it needs to be, I'd like to see, six foot fencing up there.
You know, Ben's wanting to keep, bring up some kids' old trash.
You don't want him to be able to throw anything over.
What, are you thinking chain link, or are you thinking wood fencing, or are you thinking, I mean?
I'm thinking this is on a wish list, and we'll get down to details when we go send it out for bids.
Two thousand fourteen priority.
I think that's the idea. Electric, hook it up to the high line, man.
If he gets the constant wire and put it up there. If you put, if you put a wood fence, you know, six foot high, you're tempting them to throw stuff over, and nobody's going to see.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Well, and-
Not only that, but you got continuing maintenance, you got continuing, I mean with-
No, I think chain fences is better.
Something, something no maintenance.
Something, yeah, we don't need anything with maintenance.
You can still see and keep an eye on what's going on in there.
Yeah.
Let me ask about this small gazebo. That's the one, not at Ryman Park, the one over there. Is, is it time we move that off the, I mean, since its location, should we move it off the Ludwig lot, would that be prob-
There's no bell stop there anymore, is there?
And maybe move it somewhere else? I don't know where else that would be.
I don't know where else that would be either.
Yeah, that's what it was, that's what it was.
I'm, I'm just thinking maybe, maybe Ludwig could get the idea that, you know, the city's not going to lease it for anything, and maybe sell it to them.
We've got, I think, three more years left on our lease with them, but-
That don't mean we can't move it out of there.
No, and it doesn't mean we can't say we want to out of this lease either, I mean it-
Right.
How much do we pay him?
A dollar a year.
Nothing.
Oh.
The lease says a dollar, but the dollar never changes hands, guys. We do insure it, though.
I just think it is one of those things that makes the statement.
We can have thought about that sometimes.
You could put a soccer field.
Oh, there you go. There you go.
Yeah.
That is a great idea.
It'd be a great, uh, if they do the car show again, that's a good central location for signups for the-
Perfect.
All that, prizes, trophies.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Plus, you never know, it might just give us some movement on the Ludwig lot.
Yeah.
And that might just qualify for an endowment foundation grant.
That is a great idea. If you get the hysterical group or-
I think that's a good idea.
To do like a-
Well, it needs paint and shingle, but structurally it's good, it's good. The structure problems at this one.
Yeah, that one over there is all metal.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, no, you're right, you're right.
Yeah, a lot of it.
Those are wood, yeah. Those are wood, the support posts are wood, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, it'll be a job, but-
Well, they moved it before, from the city park to there, so this will be-
It must, it's wooden, so it comes in pieces, right?
No.
No, you'd have to pick it up and-
Pick it up altogether, braise it?
How about those running gear Tanner has?
There you go.
My baby's forgiveness, will you? Probably not, okay.
Those are both good things to add to our list, what else? You guys are on a roll.
Can we, can we do anything with the streets? I mean, tell us what you, what you're predicting as far as things that we could possibly do with some of our needy, needy streets.
Can they, do they still fill cracks?
Yes.
Why don't we have somebody come in and do that?
We did.
Yeah, but that's just the other way, if, are we going to have them come back and do the rest of the street?
We can, we can do whatever you guys want to do. Here's the facts of the matter. The facts of the matter are, we don't have enough money to do a big, major street thing. So the, the, the decision for you guys is, do we want to try to save up our money to do a big street thing, or do we let those, do the minor maintenance or the, the street maintenance as regularly as we possibly can? I mean, that's your, that's your decision. And if you do the, if you spend fifteen thousand dollars every year doing the maintenance stuff, you're not going to get any money to do the big stuff. You're not going to build any money. So, I mean, but if you're doing the maintenance stuff, then it's not getting any worse either. So, I mean, but that's, that's kind of your decision. When it's time, when we finally have to do something about the big, major stuff, it's going to mean that we're going to have to borrow some money and raise some taxes to do it.
Jerry, fill cracks?
Uh, we don't have the equipment to do that.
Hell, you should, we had, we had three oilers.
Yeah, I don't know where the inventory, I don't know that, it was gone.
I don't know if it's here or not.
Martin built two of them, and we bought one.
I have no idea.
From Minnesota, we had three different oilers.
You're asking the wrong person. I don't know.
Those are the-
Well, I did inventory, they were not there.
Yeah, where, where, where they went bad.
Did they disappear when the shop got blown down?
Warren Dean always did them, I always hired one or two kids to help, you know.
Well, and that's just a-
You got too close to the heat.
No, I got too close to the dark. That's what happened.
Can we, can we check with Jerry?
Yep.
Well, she said there wasn't any elsewhere.
I did the inventory, they're not there.
I wonder what happened to them?
Is that something that, who said that, something that would have got in with the fire?
No.
The tornado?
Or the tornado, no?
That was something that sat outside up there.
The two that Martin made sat up there.
They sat outside, didn't they?
Outside forever. And then the other one that we bought was inside. And you, and you bought blocks of asphalt, and you fired this thing up, and you put the blocks in there, melted it, and then these guys filled, filled a I don't know, what do you call it, Randy, you filled like a little bucket, and you just had a few-
Peeed out where you sure it was, and you had a little spring on the tire.
Yeah, you just loved walked along, and like the old oil fill can things, just walked it all the way across the crack, and then they put some sand on it, and we did that for years and years and years.
I remember doing it.
Well, let's, let's do a thorough check, and see if maybe Jerry knows where they're at, and then that's sure work.
He says they're not up there, we, I asked that one time.
But what happened to them?
Yeah, I don't know.
Have Tanner make you another one, then.
Maybe it will wait a while.
He's just bought, you just get a hundred bottle, a hundred pound propane tank, and put it on, and then it has a burner inside, and then it has a tank that you put the asphalt in, and it heats it up, and you got a valve there, you let it out into your little spigot thing, and away you go.
So you just have an asphalt-
Little wand and squirt oil out.
Well, you have an asphalt pipe somewhere, I mean, you have, or just make asphalt with the gravel and the-
You squirt the oil down the asphalt, the oil down there, you shake and chime, you rock over it, yeah, mix it up.
That's what I was saying.
Yeah, you can buy these blocks, or you used to be able to anyway, and you just put that in the-
In the burner?
In the burner, and it would melt that, and turn it to liquid, and then it was pure liquid, it didn't, it did not have any mix in it.
Well, Warren Dean did it, everybody thought he did.
Yeah, but that was a long time ago, guys.
What? What did you say? It did not have what in it?
It does not have mix in it, like peregrale or anything, it's just a straight asphalt liquid.
You just melt this block and-
Well, that's what they do on the highway.
Yeah, yeah, they do that on, they still do that.
What's the longevity for something like that? I mean, does that-
Long, long for the, for the-
For the crack filling in the cracks and stuff.
Just as long as it's patchy.
Quite a while it'll last.
Well, if you keep that job done, that preserves the life of your street.
That's right.
And it has not been, it's not been being done.
Yeah, you just go down to General Rental.
I know, I've been about this, I've lived here the last ten years.
It was always done every year.
You just go down to General Rental, get their, one of their air things, and one guy blows it out, and the next one spreads the oil on it, hell, it's no big deal.
You're not that old.
Yeah, when they did ours out at New Hope, they just used leaf blowers.
Yeah.
They blow out the crack.
It went out forty years.
They just had some little thing on the end that reduced it down more, and-
You could, you know, I'd probably-
It's everything forty years this year.
That'd probably work also.
Is everything good on the, on the Ryman Park? This Ryman Park and the Ryman Park? I mean, is everything looking okay?
Yeah, I think we got another year before we have to do something to that gazebo. I haven't looked at it really close since-
This one here?
Yeah, it's starting to need some work.
How's the water plant building coming? The, the, the valve shed, or whatever they call it?
I don't know that Jerry's done anything about that. And he had, just for your information, tonight, the boiler's not working in this building.
Was that a flowing water pressure, wasn't it?
This afternoon, and he got woke up at two AM, because the water plant was quit, and the tower was empty, so he's been going since about two o'clock this morning. Plus he moves snow, so-
I heard him go around and move snow.
Yeah, I heard him at three o'clock, I was like, Jerry, you're really waiting hour.
So under the electrical system, the load management and the upgrade transformer slash lines, we're working on that, right?
On the transformer lines, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the load management, no, but that's one of those things we've learned since we put it on here, that we can't do under our present contract anyway, so that'll be something when we get a, a new contract that we'll have to-
You got any issue trees this year, or?
Not that I'm aware of, but there's always some.
Right, there's always small stuff to do.
Yeah, there's always something.
Doesn't that guy come around and inspect your posts and stuff every year?
Yes, he's coming next week.
Yeah, he usually-
Iowa Utilities Board inspection is next week.
Trees, if there's anything.
Yeah, he'll note it in his inspection if he's unhappy about it.
So maybe we can talk about that in January's meeting, if that's out there.
Yeah, that usually is kind of minor stuff, that's why we live, use, leave tree trimming on there, just because we should do a certain amount of vegetation management every summer.
Uh, I don't remember what the tree trimming, Jerry does not have anything.
Yeah, we haven't gotten him a pole trimmer yet.
The GIS mapping is that-
We still have public form on the menu, Larry.
I think I already, I think I already used it that time.
Think you overstayed your welcome.
I got you out of sync there, Rudy.
I'm glad you showed up.
Yeah, that was a big maps that we had done, that, those color maps and-
And those are, those are, I'm going to be able to send to that company and have them send them to me, so they can be put onto this new pictometry stuff I was telling you about, Jane.
Yes, that'll be cool.
I've got the license for it, but I haven't had time to do anything with it, so.
Thanks, Larry.
See ya.
What's, the truck going here, does that, is that getting bad? Yeah, I know what it is, yeah.
There's just a few little places that are-
Getting bad?
Not real bad, it's just kind of, a building's not going to fall down before we do it.
You never had it ever checked out.
No, no, not really. That's, actually, that's one of the things that Linda put on the list that she wanted done. And I don't even know if it's that bad, in all honesty.
If you get, well, the only thing is you can get moisture and mildew if it gets bad.
Yeah.
And that wouldn't be good.
If you get like big cracking, like what we have, like right there, and things like that.
We're going to blow this building up before we go to that expense.
It is expensive.
Can you add another one?
I have.
Consider a new tractor somewhere down the line.
Do we have a pickup on there too?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're both on there. And we can get more serious about adding those things when we do our budgeting, but yeah, Janelle's right, those things are, it's becoming time.
When I talked to Jerry, he said the tractor was more important to replace than the pickup.
Oh, who's that tractor?
Well, Warren Dean was still working when he got it, and Larry was still mayor, so Larry quit being mayor in ninety-seven.
That's sixteen years.
Yeah, so, and he had it when Larry was mayor.
But a tractor well taken care of should last that long, guys.
It should last a long time.
I mean, I think the one my husband feeds cattle with every day is thirty years old, so.
Well maintained, it should be good to do.
This is John Jerry Beattie's shop the other day here, Martin said that was their first work zone, when he started.
Okay.
Okay, any more on the community improvement? That's on no action item right now? Was there anything on the improvement that we need action on?
No.
No. This bill from Randy Schultz.
An informational to council, these are only pulled apart for separate consideration because of Randy's position on the council.
And that's been done in the panel?
Absolutely.
Do we need invoices on these parts or anything? Okay, we don't.
Not unless council wants to require them.
Okay.
The one thing I have to say, Randy, is, and I don't know if Randy Booth or Justin, if anybody's ever told you that, Auburn has several, several charge accounts in different places, and if you would utilize our charge accounts, then we wouldn't have to pay sales tax on this stuff.
You didn't sell the stacks on that stuff.
But then you, you didn't have to pay-
There is no sales tax on that.
I know, but when you went and bought stuff, didn't they charge you sales?
No, I have no, I can't say you know. You didn't pay no sales- You didn't pay no sales tax on anything.
Oh, okay.
Actually, probably got cheated in the city to give it.
Okay. I just thought with this, with them being such odd numbers, that maybe you were getting charged sales tax.
I don't get charged a lot. Never had any money.
Okay, well, cool.
Cause that'd be a lot worse.
Well, yeah.
But no, I have a tax I didn't know where I was paying sales tax on that.
Okay.
And I didn't charge any of it on there.
Okay, well, that was the only thing I was curious about.
Okay, any other questions on the billing? Do we need a motion?
Make a motion to approve invoices?
Okay.
Motion by Justin, second by Cindy. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Randy, you abstained. Is that correct?
I am the other.
If I just silence, yeah.
Yes.
I think we're done with the public forum.
He laughed. Our public forum laughed.
And that was not a put down on there, I was just having fun with it. Okay, reports, public works.
He's not here.
Everything's breaking down.
Yeah, exactly.
City clerks?
Sack County League meeting is in Litton Wednesday night.
I'm gonna, I'll go.
Who's gonna go?
I'll go. Anybody else going?
Larry, wanna go with you? This is the one that spouses come to.
I have to ask them.
I need to know tomorrow, cause I've got a caterer that I've gotta tell. Give a number to.
This is the one they're having at the church, Presbyterian church they've turned to.
It's now the Litton Friendship Center.
Just you then? Are you going, Nancy?
Yeah. But I'm Litton, I'm Litton.
She's representing Litton.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't go, there won't be anybody there from Auburn. Cause Verdi's busy.
Well, then I don't wanna be the only one.
We'll bring Larry with you.
Ask if he'll go, go be there.
Don't give him the option.
Yeah, just tell him he's going.
Been married long enough, so look.
Jane, are you...
Hi, I'm trying, I have to work. I'll be tomorrow. I, if I'm gonna go, I will call you.
Okay.
Okay.
It's Wednesday night at 6:30.
I will call you tomorrow if I'm gonna go.
Yeah, okay.
What are we taking for a gift?
I don't know. What do you want me to take for a gift, guys?
Thought we talked about a gift certificate, didn't we, or was that for something else?
I don't know if we did. It fell out.
Yeah. I think we did talk about a gift certificate. And now that you say that, yeah, but good memory. Either the dollies or vans, I don't remember which one.
Right.
We talked about that.
In fact, did we talk about two, one?
One from each one. What I did last year was, was, I did, I think I did twenty dollars from each one last year.
Yeah, I think that's what we...
Do you wanna do the same thing?
If that's the going rate.
Okay. Okay. Lots of cities bring a big basket of things that they've picked up from their businesses in town and that kinda stuff, but that's all right.
I picked up my locust bean pods out of the city park and it doesn't break them down.
Can you arrange them real pretty? I have a basket back here.
They do, they bring very nice...
You put a box in there too long.
Great big, we'll have a bottle of wine or two or bread, beer bread and all kinds of stuff. I mean, they'll be like this, get hard to carry them.
Yeah, last year you couldn't hardly carry them, cause you were one of the auctioneers.
Yeah.
Well, if those are gift certificates work, then let's...
Well, if you wanna go around businesses, donate a box of shells and some outlets.
Thirty-eight specials, Justin?
Twenty-two long racks, they're harder.
Really?
Be careful, you'll be donating here. All right, will that work?
Yeah, that'll work. I'll just take care of it that way. And I'll put...
Maybe next year we should, uh, jump ahead and maybe look into something a little bit, uh, yeah. Do that or something like that.
Little odds and ends from the different businesses, maybe. That makes wonderful little art.
Yeah, that would be.
Oh, has he got anything he wants to get rid of? Has he got anything made already?
No.
No Iowa Hawkeye anything? You had some of that out here last summer.
Who would want that anyhow?
Oh, there's some, there's a couple of idiots up there that will... I'm recording this, I shouldn't have said that. There's a couple of people up there that would want that crap, but... You think he does?
Said that we'll put some more planning into it next year, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if he had something sitting around you wanted to get rid of, that would be awesome. That would be far better. It'll bring more money than...
Oh, I know, it'll bring more money than a gift certificate.
Uh-huh.
She don't have the authority without asking down. Right.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll come up with something.
Let's just do the gift certificate so we know this year and then...
Well, maybe I should go to Sparky's and get gas cards.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't done anything at Sparky's before.
Yeah.
Litton did, Litton did Sparky's last year.
Yep. Do that, but then let's be done with it.
Okay. I'll see what I can come up with. Okay, that's really...
Solid waste.
He cut you off.
It's all right, it's all, I said that's all I have anyway, so...
We had one last bill from the Howard Center that was an outrageous bill. Uh, and that's my opinion, undocumented.
You're not alone.
That's a fact. And, uh, so we had the person, their CPA or their fiscal person show up at the meeting last month to discuss it. And she basically just said, "The 28E was written so loose that it says expenses. Any and all expenses of the Howard Activity Center in regards to recycling." So, uh, but there were those that, uh, like I said, then the only option is to take it to an attorney. Have him look at the agreement, have him look at the bill and decide.
Tell him what the bill was for, though. That's where it gets really outrageous.
Uh, for vacation and, um, sick leave, unused vacation and sick leave. For the people who worked at the recycling center. So we ended up paying like thousands of dollars out to these people.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, but anyway, it's going to the Sack County Attorney or whichever attorney is for the solid waste and I think that's Barry, is it, or... Anyway.
Ben.
Ben.
Yeah. And, uh, they're gonna look at it, so we're gonna protest before we pay it, but it's the, it really comes down to that 28E agreement that was written so long ago. And it was like Larry described it, in those days, you know, everything worked out. It was, it was understood what those expenses were to be. But now, you know, that's the way it is. So, but that's the end of it and then, um, we are expecting, and I don't know if they mentioned this at Litton, but we are expecting to be able to handle recycling actually at zero cost or and/or in the future, the haulers will pay us to take the recycling material. So that ninety thousand dollars, in some years it was over a hundred thousand dollars that we gave the Howard Activity Center from solid waste fees will now, uh, no longer be there. So, it, I, as you can tell, I think it was a tremendous, good, tremendous decision and not an easy, easy political one, but a good, tremendous decision to build a recycling plant out at the, or building out at the landfill.
Do they have any drop off plans yet in Sack?
In Sack, yes.
Where are at?
Their water plant?
Okay, I know where that's at.
Do you have any indication what the landfill fees for the cities are gonna be for next year yet?
We're gonna try to keep the same because we wanna send the message that what the decision was, it was a good one and it will save money and it's already been a tremendous advantage. So I'm hoping it's gonna stay the same.
Okay.